Welcome to the Selectman's meeting for the town of Acton, Maine for our COCA Sec. 2019. First item is to apply. Let's move to the meeting. Apply.
Of the United States of America and to the Republic, where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Town Administrator Weekly Update, there is none. She's not with us tonight. She had, actually, I think her son is showing at the Freiburg Fair tonight.
She's taking some vacation time.
Exactly. Exactly. So, exactly. She has fun. Warranted some bills. You folks, you two have pretty much signed them. I'll sign them after the meeting so we can get that done. Approval of the agenda? Anything you want to change?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second that.
Moved to second to approve the agenda. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All in favor? All opposed? Minutes of the last meeting?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of September 25th, the Selectman's meeting.
I'll second that.
Moved to second to accept September 25th minutes of the Selectman's meeting. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All in favor? All opposed? Department Heads, excuse me, Department Heads and Committee Chair Updates. Do we have any? Any Department Heads, Committee Chairs at all? Okay. Old business. Bill of sale for a boat and trailer. Thank you. Last week, we accepted a bid of $550, I believe it was, for, yep, $510 for the sale of a boat and trailer. This went to Randy Kinville. So this was all voted on last week, so I think, I don't think there's any vote need to be taken. It's just a matter of signing it.
He's gonna sign it up by then.
Yeah. He did come in and pay for it, so... This is his bill of sale.
Let's see. Turn two. I thought that was D over there.
No witness. Then we do need a witness on that.
That's me.
Okay. You're the witness. Thank you.
Okay. Perfect.
Okay. Next item we have is a truck. This is a one-ton Ford from the side of payment that was sold for $4167 to a John White. So, he has come in and paid for this as well. Thank you. Okay. And last week, we opened the bids for the sand for the town. So, tonight, we get to make the decision as to who's gonna get chosen. So, we sent it off, sent it back to the two road commissioners to look at it, go look at the sand and do whatever they wanted to do, and come back with a recommendation. So, gentlemen, do you have a recommendation?
Good evening. Phil Darno, District Two Road Commissioner. So, we kinda left it open-ended last week. We both wanted to look at the sand and kinda discuss it a little bit further. So Will and I both had gone to Monarch and Landscapers Depot, and we both personally had talked to them on a separate occasion. And I guess at this point, we feel like, well, both places have enough sand to cover us. Obviously, Monarch has way more sand, but Landscapers Depot does have about 8,500 yards, I guess, stockpiled. And I guess at this point, we feel that we don't have any reason not to go with lowest bidder.
Okay.
Which would be Landscapers Depot.
Okay. That's at $9.45 versus $10 for Monarch, and Carroll was at $11.88. So, $9.45. So, okay. That's consensus between the two of you?
All right. Perfect.
Okay. Thank you.
All right.
So what's the, what's the wishes of the board?
I'd say go with Landscapers Depot if that's what they wanna try.
Okay.
Okay.
Any thoughts?
That's what the road commissioner wanna do. That's what the road commissioner wanna do.
Okay. Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion to accept the bid from Landscapers Depot for $9.45 a yard.
Okay.
I'll second.
Moved to second to accept the bid for Landscapers Depot for $9.45, and this was the low bidder. So, any further discussion? Call for a vote. All in favor? All opposed? Okay.
Just gotta sign it. She said initial.
Yep. He's the initial bid. Okay.
Where are those initials? Put my glasses on. I feel sick.
Okay. Goes in that.
Oh, there you go.
Okay. Onto new business. Adopt the General Assistance Ordinance. Basically, this is just the updated version of what we talked about earlier tonight at the public hearing for the general assistance. It says, "The municipality of Acton adopts the MMA Model Ordinance, General Assistance, Appendix A through D for the period of October 1, 2019 to September 30, 2020. These appendices are filed with the Department of Health and Human Services, DHHS, in compliance with Title 22 MRSA 4305, Section 4, signed the second day of October 2019 by the municipal officers." So...
I'll make a motion to sign the General Assistance Ordinance, Appendix A through D, and Appendix H, 2019 to 2020.
Second that.
Moved to second to sign the General Assistance Ordinance. This is a yearly thing that we do to keep up to date on this. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All in favor? All opposed? Okay.
Let me put that back with the two.
Okay. Assessors' return. Let's see what this is. County tax.
Is this what we paid?
Okay. So, so it's not necessarily, it says assessors, but it's actually county tax assessment, by the looks of it. And, County Tax Info. 2018, it was $303,224.84. 2019, $309,238.11. So it's a $6,013.27 increase, 2%. So...
And we budgeted for more than that, which is good.
I believe we did.
Yeah, we did. We budgeted, I think, $312.
That sounds about right.
Yep.
Yep. Yep.
Vote on this?
By the looks of this, yeah, this is one we have to sign, so...
All right.
Yep. So that is our county tax for this year. So, yeah, let's vote on it. So, basically, this form is the assessor's return for the county tax. So...
Make a motion to pay the county tax?
Yes, I can. We don't have any choice, right?
Not really.
No.
It is what it is.
$309,238.11.
Yep. Yep. Lot of money to live in York County. Okay. Any further discussion? Moved to second. All in favor? All opposed? Okay. Next, we have 13th Street Article, Article 43 funding. Package of... Yep. So, submitted by 13th Street Road Association.
I think there's a little issue with this. I don't know if it's an issue, but...
I've heard rumblings. I haven't heard exactly what.
I would, I would think that the road committee would have a criteria of what is acceptable for work as far as, and obviously, I don't have that in front of me to make...
Well, I, we're looking, I was looking through the ordinance, and I had the issue with, you know, I maybe should abstain from this, because I used to take, we were actually the ones that did the work on that, so I'm gonna abstain from signing this. But, the issue I have is, when we passed that ordinance, it was too vague. What it did was, and I've had this complaint all along, because I voted against the ordinance, but what we did is we took a loophole, and then we made it very vague on what the standards were. So, the problem we're having now is, is like...
Yeah, because I looked at what this is, and I don't personally feel that, I just don't feel like this should be paid for. I just don't feel like that has anything to do with this.
The issue I have is, by looking at the ordinance, is what we're gonna be doing is just general maintenance.
Right. And that's not what we're supposed to be doing.
We just paid off for grading the road, which, you know, at the end of the day, you know, you could make the argument that if you don't grade the road, it's gonna wash out, blah, 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 blah. But, at the same time, if you read the state, you know, the loophole, okay?
Right.
That it was supposed to be for doing, you know, drainage ditches, stuff to prevent, you know, but not general maintenance, I believe.
No.
And that's what it's evolved into.
Right.
And if we, if we give the precedent that we're gonna just start paying for sweeping, road grading, you know, where do you stop? The only thing I can see we're not paying for would be tree cutting.
I mean, the three of us, I mean, we probably should meet with the road committee. I mean, we should tighten it up.
There's, well, definitely.
I mean, really.
We gotta, you know, we gotta at least put some sort of...
Who's the liaison? Is it, is it you, Ed?
Pardon?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, this one here was...
I mean, to make it, you know, I mean, so they know exactly what, I mean, for all of them.
I mean, 13th Street deserves to get some money, there's no doubt, because they spent a lot of money down there.
I know they have.
Believe me, I know. And all, lot of, you know, rock, rock ponds and all kinds of stuff that we done down there. But, at the same time, I hope, I hope they didn't get the assumption that this was gonna be just for maintenance stuff.
Right.
Because I think that's what, we set the precedence by doing that loop road.
I think we need a defined, you know, list of what's acceptable, you know, what it will cover, and that's, I guess, that's our job to...
This one here is for the road sweeping for 2018 and 2019, for $500. And I agree, road sweeping isn't necessarily a...
I mean, you could make the argument, yeah, you know, that stuff's gonna eventually wash down into the rock ponds, this and that, but at the same time...
But that's what the rock ponds are there for.
It's supposed to be to clean up the rock ponds. You know, I could, and we could, you know, that would be something you'd pay for.
Yes.
But, you know...
Sweeping the road is...
A lot of it, you know, you could sweep the road, because it leaves, and pine needles on it too. But, so, we, I think we really gotta, we have to have more of a standard, because at the same time, we have, the assessor goes, okay, well, who's checking on this, and who's checking on that?
Right. And, you know, this is all new. I mean, it, you know, it passed, and it needs to be finished and tightened up.
It's gotta be tidied up.
Yeah. Yep, definitely.
So I think, before we get into that, I think we really ought to...
Right, to see, yeah.
Probably meet with the road committee.
Yep.
Sit down and, you know, come up with some sort of a guideline. I don't know what the ordinance we passed, I mean, are we able to make, add on to the...
I think you'd have to go in front of the voters and have them, you know, re-adopt the wording in the ordinance.
Yep. Because if it weren't in the, in the ordinance, I think myself has to be defined more, because it's too vague.
To assist roads?
Because I think we could, I think we can actually get in trouble ourselves...
Yeah.
...by paying some of this money out on stuff that probably shouldn't be being paid for.
It says here, "As authorized by this statute right here." We need to pull this, because this will give us, I think, more of a definition of, you know, what's acceptable to...
It says right here, "In preventing storm runoff and pollution."
But it says, "As authorized by 23 MRSA."
Yeah.
I'm just wondering what that statute itself says.
In the meantime, we have this request in front of us.
Right. So what do we do?
So, do you wanna table this until we meet with the road?
I think we oughta table it until we meet with the road committee.
Okay.
And, you know, see, you know, where this really lies.
Sure.
I don't have a problem with that. I mean, I wanna make sure we're doing everything the right way.
We'll find out when their next meeting is, and I don't think they...
I mean, because theoretically, I mean, people could start putting in for, you know, if they have a tar road, and it's like coal patch, well, the, you know, the mud still coming out, this and that.
Oh, yeah. You could stretch it to the nth degree.
And I just don't wanna see it being abused. I was, I was worried that this was gonna happen, for some reason, there wasn't a guideline in there.
Yeah. 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 And, I mean, we'll hand that back.
If anybody deserves it, they do though.
Yeah. And you can't, you can't blame the road associations for putting in for it.
Trying to get our guidelines.
It's not their fault that it doesn't, you know, that we have issues with it, but...
Most gears with it too.
Maybe at the end of the day...
I need your coffee.
Can we keep those? Okay.
Maybe at the end of the day, that, you know, maybe, you know, we'll end up doing it anyways, but I just think we oughta...
Yeah. I think there is, I think there should be some more tighter guidelines on that. Okay. Anything else on that?
Nope.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to go into executive session?
I'll make a motion, we go into executive session, 405, six dash A.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Moved to second to go into executive session. We will be right back out, folks, in a matter of about five minutes.
Keeping the game on?
Yes. And last week, we opened the bids for the sand for the town. So, tonight, we get to make the decision as to who's gonna get chosen. So, we sent it off, sent it back to the two road commissioners to look at it, go look at the sand and do whatever they wanted to do, and come back with a recommendation. So, gentlemen, do you have a recommendation?
Good evening. Phil Darno, District Two Road Commissioner. So, we kinda left it open-ended last week. We both wanted to look at the sand and kinda discuss it a little bit further. So Will and I both had gone to Monarch and Landscapers Depot, and we both personally had talked to them on a separate occasion. And I guess at this point, we feel like, well, both places have enough sand to cover us. Obviously, Monarch has way more sand, but Landscapers Depot does have about 8,500 yards, I guess, stockpiled. And I guess at this point, we feel that we don't have any reason not to go with lowest bidder.
Okay. Okay. That's at $9.45 versus $10 for Monarch, and Carroll was at $11.88. So, $9.45. So, okay. That's consensus between the two of you?
All right.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Thank you. All right. 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 Okay. Thank you. All right.[1371.12]
I just wonder when they were going to start doing this on the street. Maybe they haven't got this ready yet.
Yeah, yeah.
For all of you that are involved in that episode. But. Yes. Yes. I hope it helps. You need to be stable. We should have some. We should. Well, I was there for one. It's good out between your eyes. You better look at subjects. So when they get you there, tell you what they hold on or not?
No. No.
So why?
I don't know. I don't know if it's that. I don't know. And Virginia, they can take an hour or two hours.
Yeah, he's looking back at you for five minutes.
One time it was like, one time it was almost like an hour and a half.
Yeah. So everybody left?
No, they were, someone hanging by. Um, they were. You don't know that's gonna happen. It was at least an hour, a little over an hour, I knew that. What time? I don't blame you, Susan, Virginia. The only thing I can say, if it's, if it's a routine route, you know, I can.
Yes.
But if it's in another place or that I'm not familiar with, yes.
It doesn't come easily.
Exactly. Yes, exactly.
So we don't know if the agenda is tonight, so we don't know if everything will work or not, just how it goes.
I, I think it's announcements after that. Announcements and, um, they did the business where usually I give you a paper of agenda. Occasionally even now he gets announcements. There's chance. She takes a toll. All right, Virginia, I don't blame you. I know.
Who knows?
Yes, yes, take care of the time.
Excuse me?
Excuse me? Oh, okay, I will. I will.
I go.
Love it.
So we have the hiring decision, so pretty much we will skip it up. We'll discuss this, delete that. Right? Pretty much goes in the same way.
Um, we actually do have to make a decision on it, but we don't have to use a name.
Right.
Okay. Do I hear motion to come back out of executive session?
I make a motion we come out of executive session four oh five, six A.
I'll second that.
Move to second it, all favor? All opposed? Okay. Sorry, folks, that was longer than we thought. Hiring decision. We, uh, why don't you take the head lead on this here? This is the fire department paramedic position.
Yeah, being the liaison, um, we did, uh, some interviews last week with the fire chief and the assistant. Uh, we had three applicants. Um, they were, they were all good applicants, um, but we, we did make a decision, um, with the, the fire chief and the assistant. We, uh, talked about it, so we, what we decided to do was, uh, have an executive session tonight to go over that with the other two selectmen. Uh, go over why we made this decision, and, uh, we have, uh, we're not gonna announce the name tonight. We like to be able to send letters out to the other people and stuff before we do that. And what we're hoping to do is, um, next Wednesday, have the, uh, person that we have hired, uh, come up so we can introduce them.
Okay.
Okay. So now we just need to sign the two letters to the ones that...
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. I don't know if we really need to make a...
I don't think so. I think we just need to...
Have these ready to go.
Yep.
I'd like to thank the applicants that didn't get the job for their time.
It's quiet in here tonight.
Mm. It's also kind of chilly.
We're just coming.
Well, last night, what was it, sixty degrees last night? It was seventy this morning.
Yeah, it's gonna be thirty-five tonight or something like that. Okay, public comment. Anyone from the public? Anyone at all?
Is it two we're supposed to do?
There's one right under there too. Going once? Going twice for public comment? Okay, announcements. Uh, let's see, there's some seats open on board, cemetery committee, Lincoln School Committee, capital improvement committee, conservation and forestry committee. We're still looking for videographers to do filming of events and meetings. Uh, there's still opening for a full-time, uh, part-time fire, fire chief here in town. And I don't have the flyer, but there's also a Crock Fest coming up. I don't know when exactly that is.
That's where it's at, at the church or something?
Library.
At the library.
Yeah, their usual Crock Fest.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. I remember that one.
So I know it's hanging out, hanging up in the hall, so...
Is that like chili or something like that?
Yes.
Yeah, they have chili off.
Some of these, some of these years, I'm gonna go to that. Um, so, and we also have the Mary Grant towards the end of the month.
Yep, the pumpkin, is it the nineteenth? I think it's the nineteenth.
And I am gonna make an announcement. I wa- I cannot make that because I won't be in Bangor.
Okay.
Nah, I told them I was gonna try, but I can't make it, so...
You going to Bangor Saturday or Sunday?
I'm going up Friday night, it's Saturday, so I won't be home until...
You have a valid excuse.
I plan on...
That makes any difference, but...
I plan on going, so...
Enjoy your time up there. Yeah, I'm gonna try, I'm going too, cause...
Yeah, it'll be fun.
Yeah, my, uh, my wife told me I'm going.
Bringing the grandkids?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I, yeah, I'm going.
My wife told me I have to go to my boys' football games there. It's the senior year, so I have to make it all, so...
Yes, you have to go. I have a question, well, just a, actually, Dennis.
We're beyond public comment.
Well, well, I'm still gonna ask, I'm sorry. No, um, capital improvement, was that something you were interested in, did you say?
Yes, I spoke to, uh, Jamie a couple of weeks ago.
All right, I just wanna put your name down. This, and there was a couple others, maybe?
I a- I asked her, she needs something writing, and she said, no, just a...
Okay, cause I just wanna kinda get this started, you know, maybe the next month or so. Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay. Um, okay.
That's it.
Dave, were you here earlier tonight?
No.
Okay. Do you have any, uh, just to back up a smidge, do you have anything, anything on department heads and meeting chair? Just where you weren't here?
Yeah, thank you for asking. Um, we, uh, back, well, I guess, a couple months ago, we talked about, uh, the money that was appropriated at, uh, town meeting for the large volume of fire hose, that ten thousand dollars.
Yes.
We did get three prices from three individual vendors. Um, do you, my question in talking with Rick is, do we need to, seeing that was, uh, voted on at town meeting, that money? Do we need to bring those numbers, or...
How much you buying?
If it's more than, is it more than five... If it's more than five thousand dollars, you have to get three bids?
Which we did.
Okay, and then bring them.
Is that three sealed bids, or is that just three quotes?
Yeah, they're three quotes is what they are.
Well, it depends, I mean, you got the, the purchase sale policy of a thousand dollars, then you got the five thousand dollar one, which I thought the five thousand dollar one was more or less, you know, for like, um, contracted services, you know? Um, so it's a purchase policy, so I think all he really has to do is just give us the quotes that you've got.
Yeah.
And give us a recommend, like a recommendation, yeah.
Yeah, well, I was gonna say, we just got the last one the other day, so me and Rick will sit down and, and we'll put a packet together. Um, the prices vary a lot, um, and the quality varies a lot.
Really? Okay, so...
I'm a, I'm a big fan of not taking lowest bid unless it's, you're, so, cause not, not, I'm not a fan of taking the lowest bid, but, uh, you don't always get what you're paying for.
Exactly, and that's what the, 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 the...
The third one was the...
The lowest of the three, um, David went with that, and they've had some problems, they've had some failures on a couple lengths of hose, so, um, and everything there, so...
You make the recommendation where you think we ought to roll with this, and as long as it's not stupid crazy, you know, and which I imagine it's not.
No, it's, what, the one that we're looking at, it's like thirteen-four or something like that, but, you know, we, uh...
You got the money for it?
Exactly, we have, we have the other money that we need to buy that, to get us up to where we need to be. There'll be, uh, fifteen hundred feet of, uh, five inch on engine two, so, and, and then, uh, and everything, so. It's, and actually, the company that we're looking at, uh, length of hose was seven, I think it was seven forty for a hundred foot length, and it's usually twelve hundred, so...
Hmm, yeah.
Um, they, they came in real good, and it's good and high-quality hose and, and everything there. And it were actually, if we go with that company, it'll be with a, uh, with another, another department within the state, you know, cause we're gonna buy it from a vendor, so, um, kinda, little bit more buying power there. So, we love to put a pa- packet together, and...
Okay, maybe next Wednesday, let Jen know you wanna be on the agenda.
But we'll let her work out good there and everything, and, um, we'll go from there. And, uh, I just wanna say thank you for, um, working with us for the, for the firefighter medic job and everything, and going with our recommendations and everything, and...
Yeah, it was, uh, it was interesting, you know, like I said when we were doing the interviews, I have no idea, I'm not an EMT or a paramedic, but it was interesting.
Yep. So... Is that person gonna be working, she, he or she, that person's gonna be working an off-shift from which set, what, Sharon works?
Yes, they're gonna be working the same shift.
Same shift or a different shift?
No, different shift.
Yeah.
So the sa- the way his, the way the schedule's set up, that was something me and Rick wanted to make, so they'll always be staggered, so, and everything.
That way we always have a paramedic.
Exactly.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
Yep, yep, so, and I believe, um, yesterday, the applicants with the chief's job closed, it was, was it yesterday or today?
Yeah.
It was yesterday at four o'clock.
I think it was the first.
Yes, at four o'clock, so...
Yep.
I haven't got a clue how many we've gotten in or anything yet, so I guess we'll figure that out by the end of the week, I'm sure.
By next week, probably.
Okay, all right, well, very good. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we've been down through everything, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion we adjourn.
I'll second that.
Move to second to adjourn, all favor? All opposed? Good night, all.
Good night.